We're live. So, good morning, members. And ladies and gentlemen, one of the public who happen to be watching. We start our agenda, item number one, with apologies for absence. And I have apologies from councillors Mark Kemp G., councillor Floss Mitchell, councillor Peter Latham, councillor Roger Price. Are there any other apologies you wish me to make a note of? Thank you. Then I'll move on to item two. Declarations of interest. I need to read this. All members who believe they have a discosable community interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest. And having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the county council members' code of conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.8 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Members may declare their interest now or when the item on the agenda occurs. I pause to see if there are any... Right, I'll move on then to the minutes. Minutes of the meeting held on 16th July 2020, or before you. First of all, for accuracy, indeed only for accuracy, since discussions can't take place. Page one, which is page six on your agenda. The next page is page seven on your agenda. The next page is page eight on your agenda. The next page is page nine on your agenda. And page 10. Page 11. And I ask members please to mute. Page 12. Right, there being no comments, we'll assign those minutes as an accurate record of that meeting.
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, we now have a deputation under item four on the agenda, to receive the following deputation. I have it as from Samantha Dalling and Yvette Riley regarding access to Oxford Refuge Centre. Not sure who's going to speak first, but I now mute my microphone and ask you to speak.
Thank you, chairman. My name's Yvette Riley and I'm accompanied by Sam Dalling. And Sam and I felt it was important to come and ask council to consider the reopening of your household waste and recycling centres to both pedestrians and cyclists via the existing slot booking system. Both of us have campaigned for years to improve recycling and reduce fly tipping and waste in our local community. And we've observed that as access to the centres has been more difficult, the cases of domestic fly tipping and litter around our town and countryside around Oxford, which is where we live, has increased dramatically. For example, on Tuesday, I myself stopped my car to pick up two dining room chairs that had been dumped on the side of the busy B3047, the arterial road into Oxford. So I'm just seeing a note, chairman, that somebody's saying I can't hear the deputation. Do I need to worry about that? Is everybody else hearing me?
We can hear.
Okay, fantastic.
I can hear.
Yes, I can hear.
Okay.
I can hear.
I can hear.
Okay, I'm going to continue. Thank you. Sorry, I was just talking about the two dining room chairs that I picked up from the side of the B3047 on Tuesday. And it's becoming clear that restricting access to the centres is one of the reasons that we believe we're seeing a rise in fly tipping around our environment. For many of you, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Oxford Waste and Recycling Centre. It's located in a residential area of the town, with the nearest house actually only being less than 100 metres away. And access is good along fantastic paved footpaths. And many residents over the years have enjoyed popping to the HWRCs. And I think we'd all agree that the current access arrangements limited to car drivers only is a reduction in service that existed prior to COVID-19. But our question really is, is this fair and is it really necessary? Because we do think that restricting access to cars only is discriminatory. In particular, we think it works against the elderly, the disabled and people on low income. All of these groups are less likely to have access to a vehicle and they're now denied a service which they're paying for through their council tax. We've spoken to a number of local residents whilst we've been researching this issue, like David, who lives very, very close by to the recycling centre and can no longer take his recycling waste that he can't put in his black bin there. We also spoke to another resident who previously used her mobility scooter to access the refuge centre, which she can no longer do because clearly her vehicle doesn't have a registration number. Whilst these are just two examples of people that are impacted, there's clearly more. And our question is, how are either these two people supposed to dispose of their waste that they can't put in their black bins? Because I think it is really important that we recognise that not everybody has a relative or friend on hand to help when needed. So looking to why the restrictions were put in place in the first place. We do understand that at the start of COVID, when we knew far less about the disease, that the restrictions were tackled legitimate safety concerns, either the potential of too many people on the site or worries about safety of mixing vehicles and pedestrians. On that latter point, pedestrian access has always been permitted, so I'm not quite sure where that got put into, how that got put into the mix. We don't really think that safety of pedestrians should be a reason for denying access because all users of the tip are equally vulnerable once they leave the confines of their vehicle. And the site has, we've been there several times, has very good arrangements for managing pedestrian flow within the facility. And those arrangements could apply regardless of whether an individual arrived on foot, bike or vehicle. Furthermore, if a pedestrian were to arrive early for a book slot outside the Oxford Recycling Centre, there is a pavement that they could wait on and queue, thus limiting the total numbers in the facility at any one time. And then it could be called in by the staff at the site, as they currently do for vehicles. So we believe that the benefits of open and fair access are as follows. First of all, it sends a strong message to the community that the centres are actually available to all, because currently that's not the case. It has the potential to help reduce the fly tipping, the opportunistic fly tipping, the small domestic fly tipping that we're seeing around the countryside and in the town. And of course, if we can encourage people out of their houses on foot or by bike, then that has to be better for them, for their physical and mental health. And finally, my last point before I turn to Sam is, I believe it would allow for a more efficient use of the facility. Currently, the facility just takes nine vehicles every half an hour. And by mixing pedestrian and vehicle slots, pedestrian cyclist slots and vehicle slots, it would allow far more people to access the facility because those people will be there for a very, very short period of time. I'm now going to ask Sam from Newly's Oxford to take us through the environmental issues. Over to you, Sam.
Thank you, Yvette. I'm here to represent Newly Falsford, which is a community group and charity of which I'm a trustee. Newly Falsford was set up a little over a year ago as a community response to tackle climate change and protect the local environment. And we now have over 400 members on our Facebook group. And we provide advice on lifestyle changes and information on the local recycling schemes through the Newly's website. We feel that forcing people to use their car in order to recycle is in conflict with Hampshire County Council's climate emergency declaration. As Yvette has said, the Oxford Recycling Centre is located within the town. It's got good pedestrian access, so dropping off recycling is an errand that is readily undertaken on foot by residents who live within the town. And there are other examples in Hampshire where the centres are similarly located in the towns, such as Bishopswortham, Eastleigh, Petersfield and Winchester. Short car journeys made with cold engines are the most polluting and they have the greatest impact on our both carbon emissions and air pollution. So to tackle climate change and air pollution, we need to take steps to reduce unnecessary short journeys. And the people that are environmentally aware are not only the most people likely to recycle, but also the very group that would leave their car at home. Allowing a pedestrian option to access appointments or providing some pedestrian-only appointments would open up access to all and have the beneficial effect of promoting walking and cycling over car use. Recycling not only reduces the amount of refuse through the general waste stream, but it conserves limited natural resources. And most importantly, it saves energy, so it's a tool in tackling climate change. In 2019, over 11 tonnes of non-ferrous metals were recycled at the centre in Oxford. And this includes the aluminium foil, the cook-in takeaway trays that we can't put in our doorstep collection. So energy savings from different metals vary, but if we use aluminium as the example, the energy saved on recycling 11 tonnes instead of creating new aluminium equates to over 100 tonnes of carbon dioxide. Or to put it another way, it's equivalent to 280,000 driving miles. So if access is restricted, inevitably people will simply place recyclable material in their general waste bin. And we feel that it should be taken all steps to maximise recycling and not restricting people's access on the arbitrary grounds of how they travelled to the facility. And we've monitored availability of appointment slots over the last fortnight and there's now good availability of appointments either the next day or two days ahead at the most. So we're all adjusting to living in a world with COVID and we need to maintain normality where we can. So restoring pedestrian access to pre-COVID levels would send a strong message, but also remind us that we must do our utmost to protect the environment against future catastrophe. Very few additional resources would be required. Placement of existing barriers just to extend the pedestrian area to the perimeter gate. Some markers for social distancing, some minor alterations to the booking system. So we're asking Hampshire County Council to revisit this issue and hope that the concerns we've raised about fairness and equality, the environment and fly tipping resonate with the councillors. If the decision to restrict access can be reviewed by council or passed to the Environment Committee for further consideration, we would be happy to discuss the issues further at a later date. And if the council are not minded to reintroduce pedestrian access across all the sites in Hampshire, perhaps they could consider a small-scale pilot in Oxford and we would be happy to assist. Thank you for your time and thank you for listening. And I just want to share a photo if I can that was taken a week ago. To remember how to do this. Oh, it won't let me shoot. It won't let me. So apologies for that, but it was a photo of one of our local residents outside the dump that he can no longer use. Thank you.
Thank you both for staying well within your time. We heard you loud and clear throughout, I think. I'm going to move on now to item five on the agenda, which is chairman's announcements. I regret to have to advise you of the death of former county councillor Peter Baker since the last county council meeting was held. Peter represented the Ringwood Division from 1993 to 1997. Do I have any members who would like to speak at all to remember Peter? Thank you. In that case, I'm going to ask you to, once again, adopt the course of action which we did at the last meeting.
Chair, I'm sorry, councillor Harrison.
Councillor Harrison was just to speak, I've just been told.
Councillor Harrison. Thank you, chairman. Good morning, members. Peter was a district councillor as well as a county councillor, representing Ringwood in the New Forest. I believe he was a former bank manager. He was a very pleasant, mild-mannered sort of individual, always very polite. And one of my fondest memories of him was sitting in the chamber with a smile on his face, much more as though he was invited to a tea party rather than any political engagement. Peter also operated in the days before social media and even, I think, before emails were commonplace. So he would have done a rather different job than perhaps most of us would recognise today. But I think his polite manner and civil way of doing things served him very well. And I think he can be remembered for serving the constituents in Ringwood very ably and with great distinction.
You're muted, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. I'm so sorry, councillor. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the subject? No. At the last meeting, we adopted a course of action whereby we all bowed our heads for 30 seconds in recognition and memory of our former colleague. And so I'd ask you once again to do that right now. Just mute your microphones and all bow our heads for 30 seconds. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, members. I move now to other items of my announcements. It's my pleasure to once again announce some awards for the county council. In respect of HC3S, Amanda Waitley, who is the Business Development Manager in the county's council's catering service, has recently been awarded the Public Sector Catering Marketing Award. This was for HC3S's 30th anniversary marketing campaign last year. As this was one of the key marketing awards in the catering industry, that HC3S had not previously won, it is a particularly satisfying achievement. Congratulations. And Sir Harold Hillier Gardens have just won gold, high gold, at South and South East in Bloom for the sixth year running, which is part of the Britain in Bloom competition. This year, instead of judges coming to the site, they were asked to submit their entry using photos, presentations, et cetera. They shot a video and were delighted to receive gold again. It is a testament to the hard work of all the staff and over 200 volunteers. As the judging isn't just on the gardens, but marketing, education, front of house, catering, signage and so on. Also, Britain in Bloom South and South East have awarded the Winton Way Horticultural Site and Gardens near Ferum the highest grade of level five outstanding. This is only the second year that they have entered and is an amazing achievement to reach such a high standard. And a note in respect of CCBS Property Services and Children's Services. In that, two new primary schools successfully opened in September. I'm pleased to report that the two new primary school buildings were completed on time despite the COVID-19 crisis and opened their doors at the beginning of the term. This state-of-the-art building, these two are at Stonem Park in Eastleigh and Barton Farm in Winchester. Officers in Children's Services and Property Services worked very closely with the building contractor and the academy sponsor, who is the University of Winchester, to ensure that the buildings were finished and fitted out on time for the arrival of pupils. I'd like to congratulate everyone involved for such a great outcome in these challenging times. And that concludes my announcements. The next item on the agenda is the leader's announcement. So I call upon leader councillor Keith Manns now.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, councillors. I have a few things to say this morning, as you'd expect, because we live in rather difficult times. But first of all, I would just like to pass on my condolences for the family of Peter Baker at his sad death. I'm sure that all our thoughts and prayers are also with the children and families affected by the bus crash in Winchester on Thursday, the 10th of September. As there's an ongoing police investigation, I'm unable to comment further on the incident other than that the county council is providing all possible support to Henry Beaufort School, including support from our education psychology team to help students and staff to deal with any trauma that they may experience. I'd like to now move on to COVID-19 and particularly testing. The challenges around COVID-19 testing have been widely reported in the media of recent weeks. This is a national issue largely caused by insufficient capacity within labs and increased public demand for tests. The immediate impacts on Hampshire are recognised by the county council and its partners who are taking action to mitigate where possible to ensure that the lack of testing capacity and the knock-on effects of this do not interrupt vital services. This includes ensuring robust business continuity plans are in place across all our services. I've also ensured that our members of parliament are aware of the issues within Hampshire. Last week, I sent them a comprehensive note on testing within Hampshire and made it very clear that they could assist us by making a strong representation to government to allow more testing and for the tests themselves to be speeded up. I can say that a number of members of parliament in Hampshire have come back to me and told me they have been in touch with various members of the government, including secretaries of state, on this matter. And I'm very grateful to them for doing that. The county council continues to ensure that staff and residents are aware of the key public health messages around testing through online and countryside outdoor campaigns which are proving effective. I'd also like to say that, I'm pleased to say that we have good arrangements in place at the moment for the testing of care workers in care homes and indeed for the residents. Clearly, as I've already said, we like to see more tests, but we are more confident that those that leave hospital and are encouraged to go into a care home have, before they arrive at the care home, proper facilities for testing whether or not they're positive to the virus. I don't think I need to reiterate some of the things that have been said nationally about a return of the virus and in particular the larger number of cases, both positive cases and hospitalisation. Clearly, we live in difficult times, but what I can tell you is that in Hampshire, our level of infection is not only below the national average now, but also below that of other parts, of many other parts of the South East. Let me simply end by, on the COVID-19 issue, simply giving you the latest figures. Since the start of the pandemic, there have been 5,722 cases in Hampshire and just over 1,000 deaths. In the last week, there have been 107 new cases and two deaths in Hampshire, which clearly backs up what I've already said about the averages in Hampshire compared with the rest of the country. I would just like to pass on briefly on to schools. First of all, I'm pleased that the government accepted the fact that the best way of dealing with the results in the last year is through assessment by teachers. I think this was the right decision that they eventually came to. And I'm also clear in my own mind than any averages over the last five years to see where various counties, various schools and individuals were in relation to where they were previously. They should not take into account this year's results. This is clearly, hopefully, a one-off, although I suspect next year a number of pupils will be affected by COVID-19. Nonetheless, I think it was right to put the children first. And if it meant a few more children ended up, students going to university that may not actually have made the grade under the normal grading system, I think that's a very small price to pay. Indeed, I think in many ways it could be an advantage. Since September, we have got a large number of our children back in school in Hampshire. The figure now is over 90%, whereas the figure nationally is below 90%, which is most encouraging. And clearly, we are dealing on an individual basis, giving advice to schools if they have issues over the virus and particular infection by particular classes. Leaving COVID-19, I'll move on briefly to finance. We've heard a lot about finance. It is difficult. There's a long paper coming to the cabinet next week. So I will not mention too many figures. The fact is, we had a programme based upon our last year's settlement to ensure that we saved £80 million over two years. That continues to go ahead. It is difficult in the present circumstances to do all that we wish to do. Nonetheless, it is progressing. At the moment, the latest figure that we've got indicates that we're... that we're £83 million adrift, separate from that programme, unless we get more help from the government. What I can tell you though, is that because of our good reserves position, we are in a position to cover that in the short term. And this is not the case with many other county councils across the country. But that means that we're using up our reserves and they can only be used once. So it's very important that we restore the revenue account back to balance and that will require more support from the government for us to do that. So I am making quite strong representations, pointing out that a county such as ours, that has always been very prudent at the way we manage our financial affairs, is nonetheless significantly affected by the extra expenditure directly as a result of the COVID virus. Moving on and sticking in a way, not just with finance, but generally with local government. Many of you will have seen the various comments in the press about reorganisation of local government, devolution, combined authorities, unitary authorities. We were expecting a white paper on the subject at the beginning of this month. This hasn't appeared. I just want to make it clear to everybody that at the present time, I remain committed, as I was when I became leader, to work as closely as we can with our boroughs and our districts to ensure that our residents get the best public services they possibly can under the present circumstances, and I will continue to do that. The fact of the matter is that we must also bear in mind the direction of travel the government may want us to go in. And we have, over the last few years, updated our views as to the financial benefits of various different types of local government and particularly unitary councils. And on that particular subject, I'm also clear that I believe that the only unitary route for this county to go, if we were to go down that route at all, if we were directed by government so to do, is to have a unitary authority for the whole of Hampshire, with Hampshire not split up. I see very little advantage, if at all, of splitting the county up from a financial point of view. I see a great deal of disadvantages in terms of the disaggregation of services and in particular, the quality of services we provide, particularly in children's and adult services. But I reiterate what I've already said about wanting to work ever more closely with districts and boroughs to see if we can provide a better service for our residents. Before I finish, I would just like to say a word about the environment. First of all, I'd like to thank the two individuals, Yvette Riley and Samantha Dooling, for their contribution and their representations in their deputations. I will ask my cabinet colleague, councillor Humby, to look into the points they raised, particularly in relation to recycling centres. And indeed, some of the points that they were made are actually covered in the sorts of items that we've put together in the action plan as to how we take our environmental policies forward. Many of you know, in the summer, we had a very good conference under the Hampshire Partnership 2050, which also included members of the 2050 Commission. It went down very well with those that attended. Based upon those results and the works that's been done since we declared the climate emergency, we have now produced an action plan for the sorts of things we'll be doing ourselves, but also with our partners within the public and the private sector to ensure that we meet our targets for the reduction of carbon emissions. Practical steps on the ground, acknowledging the fact that much of what we do has to be done with partners. But, and next Monday, at my, Tuesday I think it is, at the cabinet meeting, we will be looking at exactly what we're doing in terms of this action plan. It is now in the public domain. I do encourage you all to read some of the things that we're doing under that action plan. There are 22 pages worth of actions. This just makes the point that there is one thing to talk about environmental matters, it's another to actually get on and do things. And that's exactly what this council is doing. And I'm certain that we're leading the way right across the country in the way that we are tackling and focusing on the importance of the environment generally. Clearly, one effect of the COVID-19 virus is the way we will work in the future. And I hope that whatever will be the permanent state of where we work and how we work, sustainability will be at top of the list of how we do it. There's one other matter which I want to mention in relation to the environment, and that is the planning white paper which came out at the beginning of this month. Clearly, that has environmental implications. And I'm clear in my own mind that we have to work, as I've said already, very closely with our boroughs and districts to ensure that we bring to the government's attention those parts of the planning document that we don't think will work very well and where we see advantages in some of the points that they make within the planning document. It is an important white paper. It is probably more important for our districts than ourselves, but it is nonetheless has an effect on the way we work. There's one item that I personally was slightly saddened that didn't find its way into that planning white paper, and that is what I consider to be an important ingredient in the way we recover from this pandemic and the way we look at our infrastructure, not only in physical terms, but in digital terms as well. I personally would like to see the government step up to the mark and say that all new dwellings, wherever possible, should have fibre optic cable to the front door. That is not only important, particularly for people living in urban areas, but it's also important for people in our rural areas. Not being digitally connected is becoming increasingly a problem for people in rural areas. And therefore, I hope that as a result of the representations made to the white paper, we can look towards the government to provide more statutory authority for our planning departments in our districts, in our boroughs, and indeed ourselves, to make that a prerequisite for allowing planning permission to go ahead. And there are bound to be one or two exceptions, but generally speaking, that should be the direction of travel. And on that point, I will end my leader's remarks, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Manns. We move now to item seven on the agenda. Questions understanding order 16.1.1. And the first question submitted to us is from councillor Jackie Porter, the executive lead member for Children's Services and Young People, who is councillor Patricia Stellard. So councillor Porter, if you'd please put your question now, and then councillor Stellard, if you would answer it.
Thank you, Chairman. At the last council meeting, I asked the county council how they were going to deliver school transport, but you replied you hadn't received any guidance today, to date. When did HCC actually receive guidance? How did it affect the commissioning of transport? And was any additional funding offered to cover the inevitable costs?
Thank you councillor Porter for your question and good morning, everyone. I have to advise you that government guidance regarding school transport was not released until the evening of the 11th of August. This is despite officers from the county council writing repeatedly to the Department for Education since mid-May, seeking urgent publication of this very important document. Consequently, the late publication provided a very limited window in which to organise transport for 13,000 eligible students across 1,300 routes. As a result, and despite our team working evenings and weekends to make arrangements where they could, a number of families received late notification of transport details, which whilst regrettable, was also unavoidable. In parallel with the issuing of the guidance, the government made a £1.1 million additional funding available to the county council to support additional transport costs incurred. But, at the same time, they widened the scope of the transport planning task to include management of the impact of school return on the wider public transport system. This brought approximately 4,000 more young people into scope for the planning and organising of transport. As is the case every year, settling down of the organisational arrangements occurs in the first few days of the academic year. But our officers have worked quickly to resolve any issues and have commissioned additional transport where necessary. I believe they have done a sterling job and I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge their hard work and dedication.
Thank you councillor Porter, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. Firstly, I'd like to join councillor Manns in wishing the Henry Beaufort students well after the shock of the accident so soon after the start of term. I realise the bus crash can't be discussed because it is a matter of investigation, but could the executive member give us some clarification about the time scale of that investigation and how soon the community will hear the outcome?
Thank you councillor Porter. I share everyone's concerns and our best wishes do go to the children who were involved, the families who were involved and indeed the school. And we work closely with the school, we are continuing to work closely with the school. And as councillor Manns has already said, we have made a team of educational psychologists available and a help line for parents and families if they wish to contact us on any matter. The timing of the outcomes really lies in the hands of the police. They are carrying out their investigation and as at this moment, they have not been able to confirm an exact timeframe for us. But as soon as we are aware of the information and we can make this public, we will do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Jackie Branson to the executive member for Education and Skills, who is councillor Ross Chadd. So off to councillor Branson. Councillor Chadd, would you respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Can the executive member give an update on how successful the return to school in Hampshire has been?
Thank you councillor Branson. It's been fantastic to be given this opportunity to show how well our schools are doing. The return to school has been very strong in Hampshire. All schools are open and head teachers are reporting that children and young people have returned in a positive frame of mind, eager to learn and keen to spend time with their peer group. Attendance has been comparatively high in Hampshire. The DFE collects attendance data on a daily basis. For those reasons, schools that have returned their data, 91% of primary aged children were back in school across the county by the 14th of September, compared to 86% nationally. In secondary schools, 92% of young people had returned compared to 88% nationally. Thank you.
Do you have a supplementary question councillor Branson?
Yes, I do. Can you give me some indication of the issues, of some of the issues that have been raised in the schools and what Hampshire have been doing to support them?
Thank you. Although I'm unable to be specific about any concerns that have been raised, we have played very much a supporting role for our schools at this moment. The school improvement team will continue to support individual head teachers on a one-to-one basis and providing that valuable support. Children's Services have put in place coordinated action between social care and education colleagues to target the attendance of our vulnerable children with a social worker. The school improvement team are supporting schools to develop a recovery curriculum so that pupils make rapid progress in their learning. And 170 of our school leaders have attended seminars on this. Colleagues from public health and education are working very closely with head teachers to provide vital support when a member of the school community tests positively. And finally, guidance has been produced to support head teachers with switching from remote learning if a bubble has to self-isolate. This includes providing lesson plans for primary age pupils. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Keith House to the leader of the council.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Chairman. Will the leader confirm that all county phone line services closed down for COVID six months ago are now reopened and when the last service that was closed has actually reopened? You're muted leader.
Councillor Manns, councillor Hall, sorry councillor Manns?
Thank you Chairman, thank you councillor House. The county council's public facing telephone services require physical presence in the county council office to enable the customer service advisers to access the call centre technology. In the light of this requirement, steps have been taken to ensure that phone lines to adult health and care, children's services and registrations have been prioritised and these lines have remained open throughout the COVID period. Furthermore, the county council launched a new telephone booking service for household waste recycling centres during the summer. A number of external phone lines have remained closed during the COVID period, including general inquiries. For these less urgent inquiry routes, members of the public are directed to the county council's website and if necessary, can make contact through an online contact us form. These inquiry forms are then responded to by customer services teams working remotely. Over the past six months, the county council has been replacing its telephony infrastructure and transforming it so that all phone users across the organisation can use Microsoft Teams. This significant programme is now largely complete with the contact centre element planned to go live in early October. Importantly, the new technology platform enables the customer service advisers to work remotely and will therefore enable the remaining external phone lines to be switched back on at this point.
Councillor House, you have the supplementary?
I certainly do leader, because I was chairman, because I was pretty surprised by that response. Does the leader think it really acceptable that after six months, the county council has still got a closed sign-up for its front of house services and expects many elderly and vulnerable residents to try to use online services, many of whom have not got the facility to do so? But not least because many district councils managed to get their call centres up and running over a weekend in March. Is it really acceptable?
I think that councillor House will appreciate that it's not ideal, but then COVID-19 is a pretty difficult situation in the first place.
Six months, Chair.
However, we are taking steps to ensure that precisely what he says is going to happen. And in addition, as I've indicated, the vital services are being carried out by staff coming into the telephone centres in order to provide that service. So whilst we haven't got every line up and running, we have some of them up and running and we'll have them all up and running very shortly when we've introduced this new system.
Very disappointing, but thank you leader.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor David Simpson to the leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. In view of national events, will the leader of Hampshire County Council reassure councillors and residents that he will not ask this council to do anything that is unlawful and he will not ask the legal team or any officer to do anything that would require them to decide between breaking the law or resigning their jobs?
Thank you councillor Simpson. I'm not absolutely clear... I'm not absolutely clear what you are referring to about national events. However, what I can say to you, I can confirm that I will not ask this council to do anything that is unlawful and/or ask the legal team or any officer to do anything that they would require them to decide between breaking the law or resigning their jobs.
Thank, may I, Mr Chairman? You're muted, Mr Chairman.
I'm intrigued, Mr House, what your supplementary question might be in response to that negative.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to thank councillor Mans for that reassurance. And would he agree that when a country's international reputation is being dragged through the mud?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you there because I asked you not to make a speech.
Oh, no, I'm getting to the question.
On a particular point, you may do so, otherwise I shall mute you. What is your question?
My question is, does he agree it is even more important for the constituent parts of a country to maintain high levels of probity as a counter to what is happening at the national level?
I certainly agree with the first part of what councillor Simpson has said. It is important that we maintain a high level of probity across all councils across the country. Though the other matter is outside my jurisdiction.
And outside the county councils. Thank you both. Moving on to councillor Mike Thornton's question to the executive member for recreation and heritage, who is councillor Sean Woodward. So councillor Thornton.
Thank you very much. While I note that the officers of the council are being extremely helpful regarding the abandonment of the Faroe Library by the council, is the executive member aware that I and local residents are very frustrated by the fact that the council will severely restrict the supply of books to the new volunteer run library to 100 every three months? Thank you.
Councillor Woodward?
Yep, thank you very much indeed Chairman. Thank you councillor Thornton for your question. On the 28th of July, as I'm sure members are aware, I made the very difficult decision to close Faroe Library. This closure was based on a detailed and thorough assessment of the performance of all libraries in Hampshire. And they identified Faroe actually as one of the county's poorest performing libraries. And although the county council has formally decided to close eight libraries, I welcome approaches from local communities who would want to take over the running of these buildings as independent libraries. And the clue there, Chairman, is obviously the word independent. These libraries are expected to run independently in the Hampshire County Council. However, to ensure they stand the very best chance of success, each independent library will be entitled to apply for a one-off grant of up to £10,000 from the Recreation Heritage Community Fund, as well as receiving a year's worth of officer advice. And should it transition to be an independent library, Faroe will inherit the equipment in the current library as well as the 9,000 good quality books which are currently there. And in addition, to ensure a supply of new books for the Faroe members who don't currently also use Eastleigh Library, and that's around 700 people by my reckoning, the independent library will be entitled to join the group membership scheme. And that means they can borrow 100 additional items at any time from Hampshire's libraries. And these books can be refreshed every three months. And on top of all of this, Chairman, through our Good Neighbor scheme, the Ready Reads offer means that bags of pre-selected books can be ordered by any Faroe customer and collected from Eastleigh Library by a Faroe Library volunteer. So overall, I would think that when this is combined with the high levels of success independent libraries have in attracting book donations, I have no doubt, Chairman, that residents of Faroe will have an excellent selection of books from which to choose. Can't actually hear you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Thornton, do you have supplementary questions?
Yes, please Chair, thank you. Thank you for the outline, which I think we're all aware of from your initial communications. But my point is, is that we don't feel the volunteers and the people who organise the Faroe Library, that 100 books every three months, which is less than three books a day, is actually adequate. Could we therefore talk further about this and come up with a figure that actually would be of assistance to the residents and children of Faroe? It's the children we're most concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman, I'm happy to come back on that point. I guess it's probably worth observing that when I made the decision on the 28th of July, quite a few members appeared before me and they made some very, very helpful comments. And I made a number of decisions which were very different from those that the officers recommended on the basis of what they said. And councillor Thornton didn't approach me to make any comments at all in defence of Faroe Library or anywhere else on my decision day. So that would have been something I would certainly perhaps have been able to take into account. But I will look at it and I will see whether we can have any flexibilities around the number of books. But I do emphasise, there are already 9,000 good quality books in Faroe Library and that they will be able to be steadily replenished. But I will be happy to look with the Head of Libraries on at what we can do around the exact numbers Chairman.
Thank you. It's great to meet you from councillor.
I've just been had a go at by someone for not attending something. I just wanted to say I've been working extremely hard with the parish council in Faroe, with the borough council members in Faroe and the residents of Faroe regarding Faroe. The fact that I wasn't on the decision day for a personal reason which I could not attend, I do not think it is decent and nice of councillor Woodward to have a go at me for having to miss that day for personal reasons. Thank you, just wanted to say that. I don't expect any reply.
If I'm being chairman, having been accused of, by the saying of being both indecent and not nice, then perhaps I should reply. If I had heard from councillor Thornton, even by email or some method of communication to say, well, I can't attend the decision day, but please will you take these issues into account? Of course, I would have been happy to do so. There are many means we have of communication. Thank you Chairman.
I'm going to stop it there. I think you both made your point. So councillor Fran Carpenter to the leader. Councillor Carpenter?
Thank you Chairman, and also thank you to the leader for your earlier statement as well on this subject. It looks as if we may soon be considering devolution again. I'm all for the merging of local authorities if it results in efficiencies for the taxpayer and the removal of layers of duplicate administration and work, layers which often only serve to confuse residents. But I am not at all keen on the idea of mayors. Why have a mayor and a perfectly good leader of a council? You surely don't need both. Does the leader of the council agree with me on any of these points? Thank you.
Councillor Mans?
Thank you councillor Carpenter for your question. It's our understanding that the government intends to publish a white paper on devolution and economic recovery. Devolution being seen as a route to support economic recovery. There has been much speculation that this could involve the creation of more combined authorities such as Greater Manchester with a scale to impact on the local economy. The model of combined authority makes some sense to me, but I share the reservations of a number of members about whether the model of a directly elected mayor would work in a place like Hampshire and the Isle of Wight. We know the model floundered five years ago. There has been talk that two-tier counties are not conducive towards the establishment of combined authorities, which has begged the question about further local government reorganisation. However, that is just speculation and I would urge that we wait the publication of the white paper before drawing judgement. For my own part, I've long been a strong advocate, as I said earlier, of the two-tier model. Though I have to concede, the financial case for change may in time make changes necessary.
Thank you.
Councillor Carpenter, do you have a supplementary question?
No, thanks very much.
Thank you. Then I move on to the next question, which is from councillor Roger Huckstep to the leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Will the leader please provide a statement on the formation of the recently inaugurated Outbreak Engagement Board and its agenda to date?
Thank you councillor Huckstep for your question. The Hampshire Local Outbreak Engagement Board, of which I am chairman, is a subcommittee of the county council's cabinet and forms part of the Local Outbreak Control Plan for Hampshire. The other county council members are the executive member for public health, children's, executive members for public health, children's services, adult social care and health. In addition, councillor House, councillor Ratigan from Basingstoke, Laura Taylor from Winchester and Judy Gallow representing the CCGs are on the committee as well, the board as well. They represent obviously the opposition district councils and as I've indicated, the CCGs. And I'm very pleased that councillor House accepted my invitation to join this board because the fact is, as I've said many times before, our aim is to reduce the scale of the virus wherever we can. In order to do so, we need to work together and this is a good example of us doing precisely that. The board's purpose is to provide political oversight of the local delivery of test and trace service, to lead the engagement with local communities and to be the public face of the county council's response in the event of any local outbreaks of Covid-19. The board has formally met three times since its formation on the 14th of July and has received comprehensive updates on the current situation and the most up-to-date Covid-19 data from the director of public health, as well as updates on the county council's very effective communications. While the board is scheduled to meet monthly, as chairman, I'm ready to call additional meetings and briefings should they be required as part of Hampshire's proactive response to the present rising infection rates.
Thank you councillor Huckstep, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to thank the leader for his statement and I don't have a supplementary question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jan Warwick to the leader is the next question.
Thank you Chairman and thank you leader. Hampshire has hardly any formal green belt land designated. Would the leader support the CPRAE and those district councils within Hampshire seeking to designate more appropriate areas of green belts? Thank you.
I'd like to thank councillor Warwick for this question. This is an important question. I would support the designation of additional green belts in Hampshire. I think the protection of the character and the environment of Hampshire should be a central aspect of planning for the future. The erosion of undeveloped countryside gaps between settlements right across the county, but particularly in southern Hampshire is of real concern. And experience has shown that policy designations falling short of green belts are ineffective in preventing the merging of settlements. Indeed, occasionally, a green belt has been built on and that merging takes place. So it is really important that we try to maintain those gaps. I commend the CPRAE for their role in helping to ensure that the subject of new green belt designations is once again on the local planning agenda in Hampshire.
Councillor Warwick, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, please Chairman, thank you. As stated in our government's Planning for the Future White Paper, consultation improvements in the energy efficiency standards of our buildings and access to renewable energy are essential if we are to achieve net zero by 2050. Will the leader in his letter to the Secretary of State emphasise these important standards need to be measurable and built into the design stage of the planning process? Thank you.
Yes, I know certainly will. I think it's really important if we're to be serious about meeting these targets that we actually understand the measures we have to take, particularly in our built environment and new buildings in order to achieve it. In the same way as I mentioned earlier about the importance of digital connectivity to people's houses, equally, it's very important that within the planning system we have clear guidance as to the type of buildings we expect to be put up in the future to meet these environmental standards.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Rod Cooper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
To the executive member for economy, transport and environment, who is the deputy leader councillor Rob Humby. Go ahead councillor Cooper.
Would the executive member please provide an update on how the county council's household waste recycling centres are operating under the current Covid-19 restrictions?
Thank you councillor Cooper and the opportunity to be able to talk about how the sites are in operating. Despite the necessary social distancing restrictions, the household waste recycling centre network across Hampshire is working well. The booking system introduced in June has helped to manage demand, eliminating the serious queues at a number of sites, which we had many complaints about from residents and had found the experience of visiting the HJVC's more pleasant and convenient. Careful monitoring of throughputs in conjunction with site staff has enabled us to almost double the number of slots available daily since implementation, with around 55,000 spaces now available every week. Even though sites are operating at 50% of variable capacity, tonnesages received are over 60% of 2019 levels, indicating that residents are making fuller use of visits. Concurrently have been gradual resumption of onsite services and policies, including the reopening of the reuse shops under Covid-safe conditions and the re-acceptance of chargeable waste types and tow trailers. This has enabled us to confidently resume the implementation of cross-border measures, including the new vehicle registration scheme, which was unavoidably delayed in April. And if I also may mention, Mr Chairman, to thank the two deputies Samantha Darling and Yvette Riley, who the leader mentioned as well and thanked. Very good presentation as they may. And I will certainly be picking up on those points and discussing that with officers to see what options are available to us to accommodate some of the points that they made. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Cooper, do you have a supplementary question?
No, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we've got time, I think, to squeeze in one last question, which might mean we run slightly over time. But once the question is started, but like any other question time, the answer must be heard. So from councillor Kirsty North to the executive lead member for Christian, sorry, children's services and young people, who is councillor Patricia Stalard. So councillor North?
Thank you very much Chairman. Would the executive member please make a statement about the recent school bus incident at Wellhouse Lane, Winchester?
Thank you councillor North. Members will be aware of the incident which took place on the morning of the 10th of September involving a double-decker Stagecoach bus hitting an overhead railway bridge at Wellhouse Lane in Winchester. The bus service was contracted by Hampshire County Council for pupils who are eligible for home-to-school transport. This is one of 1,300 route contracts and was recently awarded to Stagecoach. The route, I think it is worth noting members, that the route specified in the contract, in our contract, does not pass under this bridge. Regrettably, three children suffered serious but not life-threatening injuries and were taken to hospital. Thirteen other children needed treatment for minor injuries. I attended the scene of the accident along with the deputy leader councillor Humby. The head teacher, members of the school's senior leadership team and county council officers were also very quickly at the scene of the accident. Hampshire County Council continues to provide support to the school through its educational psychology team to help students and staff to deal with any trauma they may have experienced. In addition, a support helpline has been made available to all families. Double-decker buses serving the school have been replaced with single-decker vehicles and an additional vehicle operated by a different supplier has been provided as an alternative on the affected route. Bus operator Stagecoach have commenced an investigation and the police investigation is also ongoing. Hampshire County Council is in regular contact with Stagecoach, the Henry Beaufort School and families served by the transport. But clearly members, it would not be appropriate for me to make further comment pending the outcome of those investigations.
You're muted Chairman.
Councillor Northam, my apologies, do you have a supplementary question?
No, but thank you for that answer and thank you for all the work that you and the Children's Services Department are doing.
I'll pass that on, thank you.
I'm sorry we ran over time, but we move on now to item.
On a point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order councillor Todd.
Yes, can I move to suspend standing order 8.9, specifically the section restricting question time to 30 minutes?
You may so move, however I should just point out that in the absence of standing orders, the chair would have to have some difficulty in pointing to orders to regulate matters for members and that's why we don't usually permit the suspension of standing orders, but I'm quite happy if you wish and you have a second, that we will take a vote on it.
I'll happily second Chair and I'm sure you're admirably capable of managing the meeting even without any standing orders at all.
Thank you. I now need to take a vote. I think we're going to do this by poll, so, because there is a problem with MS Teams currently, it's not one of our problems, it's one of their problems relating to the voting system, so we'll do the poll, which will mean that I need to go through a list of the members in alphabetic order and I'm just waiting for someone to give me the list.
Mr Chairman, it might.
Until I call your name.
Mr Chairman, it might be quicker just to take the next three questions, so at least everybody has the first shot, take less time than the roll call, I suspect.
I'm very grateful for your advice always councillor Todd, but I'll continue to chair the meeting the way I see it fit. So. I need to mute.
Thank you Chairman. I will now conduct a roll call. Can I just check please that all members can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you members, usual procedure please. When your name is called, can you please confirm for, against or abstain?
Chairman.
Can we be clear on what it is we're voting on?
Absolutely, thank you councillor Collett, I was going to say the same thing. I believe there's eight questions isn't there left to hear?
No, that wasn't my question. My question is that I understand councillor Todd only moved the suspension of the standing order that limits the time, not the suspension of all standing orders, which was the impression given by the Chair.
Well done.
Can I, can I confirm that there are still eight questions left to be answered?
And that's why it's important that I answer. All right, the difficulty we have here is that we're trying to do a roll call and members are interrupting it. Councillor Collett said something, but because we are mute, when the roll call is done, we can't hear what councillor Collett said.
Perhaps he could repeat it?
Hmm, that'd be good.
Sorry, I don't think. The problem is that we are mute in order to do the roll call and includes me being mute, so when you interrupt a roll call with a statement, we don't, we can't hear your statement, so I didn't hear what you said councillor Collett.
Chairman, the question I asked was, could someone clarify exactly what we're voting for, because I understand that councillor Todd only moved the suspension of the standing order that limits the time for questions. He didn't move that all standing orders be suspended.
That is correct, so you're voting for or against that. You either say for if you wish standing orders to be suspended, or you say against if you do not wish. I would have thought that was fairly clear, but we'll start again then with the roll call. I now need to mute.
Right. Okay members, so just to remind you, when I call your name, please respond for, against, abstain. Councillor Benison?
Against.
Councillor Burkitt? Councillor Boils? Councillor Bolton?
Against.
Councillor Branson?
Against.
Councillor Briggs?
Against.
Councillor Brooks?
Against.
Councillor Burgess?
Against.
Councillor Carew?
Against.
Councillor Carpenter?
Against.
Councillor Carter?
Against.
Councillor Chad?
Against.
Councillor Chegwin?
For.
Councillor Chowdhury?
Against.
Against.
Thank you Charles. Councillor Clark?
For.
Councillor Collett?
For.
Councillor Cooper?
Against.
Apologies, my apologies, can I ask for councillor Mark Cooper please?
For.
Councillor Rod Cooper?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Craig?
For.
Councillor Dibbs? Councillor Dowden?
For.
Councillor Edgar? Councillor Evans?
Against.
Councillor Fairhurst?
Against.
Councillor Forster?
Against.
Councillor Frankham?
For.
Councillor Gibson?
Against.
Councillor Glenn?
Against.
Councillor Grojewski?
Against.
Councillor Harrison?
For.
Councillor Harvey?
Against.
Councillor Hare?
Against.
Councillor Heron?
Again.
Councillor Hiscock?
For.
Councillor Hockley? Councillor House?
For.
Councillor Hughes?
Against.
Councillor Humby?
Against.
Councillor Huckstep?
Against.
Councillor Irish?
For.
Councillor James?
For.
If he wants to. Councillor. Councillor Joy?
Against.
Councillor Keest. Members, when you pass your vote, could you please mute? Councillor Keest?
Against.
Councillor Kemp G? Councillor Kendall?
Abstain.
Councillor Curl?
For.
Councillor Latham? Councillor Mans?
Against.
Councillor McAvoy?
Against.
Councillor McNair Scott?
Against.
Councillor Meller?
Against.
Councillor Mitchell? Councillor Macata?
Against.
Councillor North?
Against.
Councillor Oppenheimer?
Against.
Councillor Penman?
Against.
Councillor Perry?
Against.
Councillor Philpot?
Against.
Councillor Porter?
For.
Councillor Price? Councillor Quantrill?
Against.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Simpson?
For.
Councillor Stalard?
Against.
Councillor Still? Could you repeat that councillor Still?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Tennant?
For.
Councillor Thacker?
Against.
Councillor Thierry?
Against.
Councillor Thornton?
For.
Councillor Todd?
For.
Councillor Vaughan?
Against.
Councillor Wade?
For.
Councillor Warwick?
Against.
Councillor Westbrook?
For.
Councillor White?
Against.
Councillor Withers?
Against.
Councillor Woodward?
Against.
Thank you.
Do we have a count? Councillor Dowden, do you have your hand up for a reason? You're mute?
Oh, sorry. Chairman, whatever the result of this voting vote is, can we please all members get answers to those questions, just not, just the person who asked the question?
Yes, as I said at the beginning, the, all the questions will be answered in writing to all members, both the original question and the, and the response. Now, we had 49 against suspending standard orders, 20 in favour of suspending standing orders, one abstention being myself, therefore we shall not suspend standing orders and I should tell you that I am pleased about that, because otherwise we could have a situation where we get 100 questions put to us, standing orders get suspended on a precedent basis and therefore you spend the whole meeting listening to questions. The reason we have 30 minutes is because it's quite adequate to answer all questions and members of the public should know that all the answers to all the questions are given to all the members in the normal course of events, so there's, there's no attempt here to hide anything or to curtail anything in any way. We move now to part one, matters for decision, which is item eight on the agenda relating to appointments and there is a paper from the chief executive. I think it is self-explanatory. Would the leader kindly present the resolution to us?
Yes, thank you Chairman. The, the two appointments are, as you rightly say, self-explanatory, I have nothing to add to them and I would just like the council to approve these appointments. Thank you.
Right members, are we in agreement with the recommendation? I, I'm happy to accept a show of hands if I can see all members, otherwise we shall have to do a roll call. I'm seeing a show of hands coming. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Yeah? Right, I've got all the hands up, is there anyone who disagrees? Is there anyone who disagrees? Because if there's no one who disagrees, then with all those hands up saying they do agree, I can proceed and accept. I'm going to give it a slight pause for anyone to disagree. Councillor Perry, your hand is up, do you want to disagree or agree? Thank you. Okay, so everyone's agreed, we shall move on then, that is acceptable. The recommendation is approved and I move on now to a notice of motion, which is agenda item nine. And that motion, that motion is to be proposed by councillor Porter, seconded by councillor Malcolm Wade. For avoidance of doubt, earlier I spoke to councillor Wade and he has said that he would prefer to defer his seconding of the motion till later in the debate, so the first speaker will be councillor Porter and thereafter I will call for speakers in a normal way. Councillor Porter?
I think councillor Mans has raised his hand.
No, I think councillor Mans is happy for you to proceed.
Okay, thank you. And, thank you very much. Before I start, I'd just like to say there's a small typographical error in the last paragraph, it says six, it should state 11, so I'll be reading out 11. I'm pleased to place this motion before council on behalf of all the children in Hampshire. A few years ago, a parent asked me if I could help make her cycling and walking journey to school safer. We took the journey on foot, but when I bent down to talk to the child, I was struck by the fumes wafting into her face as other parents on the school run were polluting the very air that her child breathed in at the roadside. All we ended up with was a sign to say school ahead. These are emails received from parents across the county and I believe the motion has support from them. Leslie writes, if you voted through, I note it would be transformational for children. My daughter attends and she described the school one of the most congested in the county. 97% of children are currently driven to school. I can't see this situation changing until the infrastructure is put in place to give space for cyclists. Councillor Quantrill, I'd be really encouraged if you'd support this motion tomorrow. Jill writes, with three schools on one site, Pennington Roads have huge concerns at school runtimes. I note for the first time you're proposing to monitor air quality at child height. I've maintained that measuring child height is essential for the last three years. I'm contacting councillor Carpenter too. Meg writes, thank you for raising school streets today. I've already discussed this with councillor Hare, my support for the scheme and wish to see school streets adopted at suitable locations within Faram and Gosport. I want to see my children having the freedom to choose active travel. Sarah writes to councillor Todd, I'm writing to wholeheartedly support the motion on school streets. I imagine many school governors and head teachers will be cheering from the rooftops. This will really help to reduce traffic around schools and encourage modal shift in a way that gentle encouragement will never achieve, not to mention improving the quality of the air that children breathe as they go in and out of school. So, the motion is that this council notes that as people are being instructed to return to school and work this autumn, the national government is encouraging everyone to walk or cycle where possible instead of taking public transport or returning to their cars. The government has announced a £250 million emergency active travel fund for temporary infrastructure to enable safe cycling and walking, of which Hampshire has currently received 860k and hopes to receive a further 3.45 million. The Transport Secretary issued new statutory guidance on the 9th of May to all highways authorities, requiring to deliver transformative change within an urgent timeframe. Measures listed under the statutory guidance include pop-up cycle facilities, widening footways, school street schemes and reducing speed limits. The guidance states further that measures should be taken as swiftly as possible and in any event within weeks, given the urgent need to change travel habits before the restart takes full effect. School street schemes, which close roads outside schools during drop-off and pick-up times, have the multiple aims of improving road safety for pupils, encouraging active travel to school and modal shift out of cars and improving the air quality and environment at the school gates, and are very effective for enabling social distancing outside schools. This council further notes that prior to COVID-19 related changes, school street schemes were successfully introduced or being trialled at multiple local authorities across the UK. Since the announcement, enthusiasm for school streets has skyrocketed, with many more councils introducing these schemes before schools reopened and multiple NGOs calling for the introduction of school streets to manage social distancing at the school gate. Progressive councils are introducing the methods under their own considerable statutory powers, making.
One minute warning councillor.
Traffic orders where necessary. Hampshire County Council has already made a number of road alterations to assist with active travel and social distancing associated with shops, but none targeted at schools. It has a once-in-a-generation opportunity to positively impact travel choices, including the associated benefits on health, air quality and road safety. So this council resolves to work with district, schools and local partners to swiftly identify those schools in the county that could put a school street scheme in place, work with district, schools and local partners to enable schools that wish to take part in the school street scheme to do so, taking advantage of experimental TROs and new statutory guidance over fast-track TROs where necessary, measuring air quality around a sample of schools in all 11 districts at child head height to identify the level of air pollution that children are being exposed to at school drop-off and pick-up and pilot additional measures to improve the air quality near schools in 2021, such as living green walls and tree planting. And as I say, that includes the amendment to the, to the statement of six, it should be 11 in the third paragraph there.
Thank you, yes, we've got that. So councillor Wade, do you wish to second it and then reserve your right to speak later? But at least we've got your seconding on the motion, on, on, on the record then. Yes Chairman, I wish to second this motion and I will deeper talk later. All right, and thank you councillor Porter for reading out the full resolution which you wish us to adopt. All right. And thank you councillor Porter for reading out the full resolution which you wish us to adopt. The rest of the motion as tabled is on our order paper and is available on the agenda sheets for those who wish to see it. Now, we have councillor Mans.
Chairman, for the benefit of the council, the Conservative group will not be proposing an amendment to this particular motion. We believe that this motion is a good one to debate. I think I'm totally in agreement with the spirit of what councillor Porter is suggesting. I think we need to look closely at how we're going to finance it. And I think we'll have to see whether the government money she's mentioned in the in her proposal, in her motion, is actually available for this purpose. And we'll need to look at that, and if there are any issues, we would obviously bring them back to the next council. And if I'm allowed to, Chairman, I would like to speak towards the end of the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, in order to progress this, it would be good if you could speak at the very end in case there are any problems arising from matters in the debate for your group. Now councillor Gresky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an interesting motion, and I would concur with what the leader has has just said. But yes, it's an interesting motion, not least because it is virtually word for word the exact same motion tabled at a meeting of Gloucestershire County Council by Liberal Democrat councillor Ian Dobie on June the twenty fourth this year. Word for word, including item three for resolution, which asks us to measure the air quality around a sample of schools in all six districts. And I I realise that we've just heard that councillor Porter has now noticed this this error. Yeah, Gloucestershire has six districts, and as councillor Porter has now acknowledged, Hampshire has eleven. So it's a pity that such an important motion has been written with Gloucestershire residents in mind and has not been tailored to the requirements of Hampshire residents. A similar motion was also tabled by Lib Dem councillor David Vasmer at Shropshire County Council on the sixteenth of July. And I I won't go on and give you a list. Councillor Dobie's motion has much to commend it. However, I do have several concerns. Firstly, the cost. The three school pilot, three school pilot in Gloucestershire appears to have a budget of a hundred thousand pounds. Now, in Hampshire, we have around two hundred and sixteen primary schools, sixty nine secondary schools and sixty independent or special schools. So even if all of the emergency active travel fund was spent on this initiative, it wouldn't be anywhere near enough for even half of the schools. So perhaps councillor Porter, when she sums up, can tell us how the council, how this county council should fund this. Where does she propose the money will come from? Secondly, any schemes would need to be consulted on with schools, parents and also the wider community around a school, yet there is no mention of consultation. And I ask why not? Failing to consult may be the Liberal Democrat way of doing things, as we saw at Eastleigh Borough Council earlier this month, with the closure of Market Street and High Street to traffic, despite a petition from traders and shoppers with thousands of signatures. But it isn't the conservative way of doing things. We would need to listen to people first before foisting a school street scheme on them. And thirdly, a large number of Covid travel schemes were put forward and implemented over the summer. However, I don't recall there being a clamour for school streets. To my mind, this motion puts the cart before the horse. In the final four points we're asked to note, this is on page fifteen, I'd like to know what councillor Porter means or councillor Dobie mean by trialled in multiple authorities. Is there a number? And please can she quantify the phrases enthusiasm has rocketed and many more councils toward the bottom of page fifteen? And could she please define progressive council? And what does she mean by swiftly? Does she think it is wise that these schemes should be considered at a time where many people are looking at everything through the prism of Covid? To be frank, Chairman, I would have preferred to see this matter taken to Cabinet or the relevant select committee with the opportunity to evaluate the evidence and plan feasibility studies, which would provide answers to some of the questions I've raised. However, we are where we are. And I said at the start that the motion has some merit, and there would certainly be tangible benefits in terms of health and climate change, which we should welcome. And so, in the interests of getting the ball rolling, I will, with the reservations I've mentioned, be supporting the motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Fifty. Councillor Foster. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Chairman. I was really delighted to see what councillor Gresky said, because I I pretty much concur with everything she just said. One of the points that was raised by by councillor Porter was around air quality. And I hasten to add the fact that there is a move nationally to electrification, electric vehicles, electric buses, electric cars, e-bikes even. That in itself, especially if the target of twenty thirty five or twenty thirty is now rumoured for all new vehicles being battery powered, is is met, will reduce the issues relating to air quality quite dramatically. And I think it might be appropriate to have more focus on that, although I have to declare an interest in that since since that's part of a business that I'm involved in is around electrification and sustainability. But I would say that the aim of encouraging people to use sustainable transport is is a really worthy aim. I will be supporting the motion with the reservations that councillor Gresky raised. Also, a couple of others that I think are really important. This sort of thing has to be driven locally, not at national or at county level. An example of where things can go wrong and of a Lib Dem council doing it wrong and not consulting is exactly what's been happening in Fleet in Hart, where an experimental traffic order was put in very hastily with lots of problems resulting, and a major petition, including from businesses and many, many hundreds of in kind of over a thousand residents to remove it because it's not delivering what was anticipated. That lack of consultation can lead to all sorts of problems. Also, you do have many parents who drop off or pick up children on the way to or from work. And parking significant distance away from a school can be a problem, let alone if they're disabled. So there are reservations, and I think it's important that any scheme is delivered locally, decided on locally and properly consulted. So with those reservations, I support this motion.
Thank you. The next speaker is councillor Chad.
Thank you, Chairman. I I agree with the merit of this motion. I do, however, have reservations, as my previous the previous speakers have highlighted before. It is always great when I do get the opportunity to go and visit schools to see schemes such as Park and Strides that have been put in place, and it's wonderful to see those in use. However, it would be wrong of me not to highlight that at this very moment in time, our schools are extremely busy with the current situation they find themselves in. And I would just like us to bear that in mind with this motion. And we we are very mindful of the fact of how busy our schools are. But I will be supporting this motion with those reservations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the chance to speak on this motion, which I strongly support. I was a bit surprised at the beginning of the debate that councillor Gresky accused the Liberal Democrats of being unanimous in our intent, united, purposeful team working around the country to do a better job for sustainable transport to schools. And I realise, you know, we we can't hold 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 ourselves up compared to a Conservative party that isn't just split on some issues, but is actually prepared to split the country, putting a border in between Kent and the rest of the country, admittedly long and objective for most Hampshire County councils councillors, and and about a border between Sorry, and a border between ourselves and Northern Ireland.
Who's raising point of order?
What's the order?
Sorry, a point of order has been raised. Who's raised the point of order?
What is the point of order?
Councillor Carew, sorry. I'm afraid councillor Todd is talking about irrelevant national party political issues which have got nothing to do with this motion. Please can he stick to the point and to the motion? Thank you.
I was not the person who brought in the different national perspectives of different councils around the country on this particular issue. I was merely responding to a point raised by councillor Gresky. But the interesting thing is that when it comes to who we're aligned with on this, it's clear that the Conservatives haven't read the May twenty third guidance issued by Grant Shapps, the Conservative Secretary of State for Transport, which, when talking about reallocating road space measures in the context of Covid, highlights as the third priority encouraging walking and cycling to school, for example, through the introduction of more school streets. They can be effective in encouraging more walking and cycling and where the parents, children and school are involved as part of the scheme development. And again, something else that councillor Gresky said that I didn't recognise was the idea that we hadn't put forward any proposals. Well, I can, I I don't know what it's like being a Conservative county councillor, but I can, speaking as a Liberal Democrat one, I have spoken to all the schools in my division about what measures might enable them to, what highways measures might enable better walking and cycling access to their school. I've spoken to the residents in the roads that are affected, along with my colleagues. I've been talking to school governors, and we submitted schemes on the maps for those schools, highlighting changes which would have made it easier for children to approach the school in a safe and socially distanced way. They're on the map and they received a decent number of support from local residents. So I think it's unfair to maybe expand her own experience and categorise all other county councillors and areas as behaving that way. Because what also happened when I went forward with specific proposals to enable safer and easier and more child friendly access to schools, I was told that despite what the Secretary of State had said, that school related programmes were not a priority. So I welcome the fact that the Conservatives are intending to support this motion. I do think it's important that as we think about measures to support walking and cycling, we 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 don't just think of our town centres, but we think of areas around schools and we think about creating pedestrian and cycle zones more widely in 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 local areas and low traffic neighbourhoods. There's an, you know, there's another measure that Mr. Shapps supports that that we that this council needs to do more on, such as twenty mile an hour speed limits. So there's a lot more ambition needed beyond school streets. But this will be a very powerful step in the right direction, and therefore I would ask council to support it enthusiastically and for us to start seeing action on these particular issues.
Councillor Hambey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Listen very carefully to the debate and things that are being said. I think in principle, I would support the motion, but do have a few reservations. I think most members would, but I think we just need to consider a few other points. We have actually been introducing a lot of measures right across the country under cycling, walking and pop up schemes. These are continually monitored effectively on a weekly basis, and many of them have been amended because they haven't worked as we we might have hoped. And indeed, some of them in certain areas have actually been taken out. Now, we had to implement some of these very quickly at the time because of the way the fund was. But I'm pleased councillor Todd has mentioned Grant Shapps, because he's made it very clear that now is the time to have more consultation, to actually work with the people locally. And we've also, he made a statement the other day, that warned councils not to abuse this fund. And we've had to take very careful note of that as well. So I think there is generally, you know, support for it. But I think we need to make sure we understand all the issues. Now, one of those big things would be the funding. We're still waiting to hear on the on the emergency active travel fund whether we're going to receive that fund. And actually, there would be a very small amount of that that we can allocate to this. So we need to understand how we're going to fund it, have very good consultation locally, and I know councillor Chadd's point about schools are very busy with other things at the moment. And on that point, to try and do any feasibility work right now, which still has to be funded, we need to make sure we can do that. We are in exceptional times, and it's not normal circumstances at the moment on the school gate. So what would we be gathering, you know, data that is meaningful at this current point? So to be clear, support it in principle. Personally, I'd rather see it go to a select committee. They fully understand all these issues. We can discuss those issues there, and they could come to a recommendation that could either go back to Cabinet or to the relevant portfolio holder. So I think in principle, absolutely. But let's just take a little bit of time to think about and understand all those issues and also be very clear, this is not funded. So we need to make sure that what we, you know, what might come out of this, we can actually fund and implement, and that it works. And just to reiterate, some of the schemes we've implemented, we've had to modify and take out because they haven't worked as we first thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, we're reaching a situation where we're starting to repeat ourselves, I think. We've got councillor Stelard, then councillor Oppenheimer, and I'm going to ask councillor Malcolm Wade to speak seconding the motion. And unless someone else has got something new to say, councillor Carew, yes, I'll include you after councillor Oppenheimer, then then I I think we can draw a line with this, and because we're all in agreement that it should go through, subject to some reservations when once it gets implemented. But now I have councillor Stelard.
Thank you, Chairman. I shall be very, very brief, because like the people who have spoken before me this morning, I certainly agree the motion in principle, especially as I hope it would help to reduce levels of obesity in children in Hampshire. That must be a positive thing. And also bearing in mind that the option is for the schools, those who wish to take part, it's not compulsory. However, I do think it does need to be examined in much more detail. And I think right from the very beginning, we all need to be realistic about the possible outcomes and time scales. Councillor Hambey has already said we need to be realistic about the financial cost of this. So I think we we need to sort of possibly, yes, take it through a select committee, get it discussed and debated at some length, and then, I think, as councillor Hambey has already said, take it to Cabinet. But in principle, yes, I agree the proposal, the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oppenheimer.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make a couple of points. The ETE Select Committee has looked at walking and cycling several times. In fact, at most of our meetings over the last two years, it's been a consistent theme of ours. And we've had very good cross-party support for all of the decisions we've taken and during all the discussions that we've had. So I think it's important that everyone recognises that and doesn't try to pretend there's some difference between the parties on this issue. We will be looking again at active travel measures at our next meeting coming up in the second week of October. And I generally welcome the initiative behind the motion. And I think it's a good idea for us to engage with this issue at the Select Committee and specifically look at active travel around schools. So I think we'll take that away and make sure we do that, starting with our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Oppenheimer. Councillor Carew?
Thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Good. Well, despite the fact that councillor Porter appears to have stolen on this motion, and despite councillor Todd's silly party political nonsense, I will be supporting this motion, not about just about obesity, but also because of climate change. But what I would like to do is can I invite all members, including the Liberal Democrats, to my division of Whitehill, Borden and Limford? Because I have an exemplar for you. We have a brand new, wonderful secondary school in Oakmoor, and we have widened the pavements. We have created Park and Stride. We've put in Belicia beacons. I've even personally had additional ones put in. And we are currently creating a safe cycle route that leads to the very back of the school gate the very back of the school gate to enable our children to cycle safe to their lessons. So we're already doing it. We have an exemplar in Whitehill and Borden, and I would like to invite you, if you want to come, I'd be delighted to show you around. So please support the motion. I think it's a wonderful idea, and I look forward to seeing this rolled out right across Hampshire. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, so we've more or less reached the end. I understand councillor Simpson wants to say something which is new. Thereafter, I'm going to ask councillor Wade to make the seconding of the motion. Councillor Manns to finally respond on behalf of his group, and then councillor Porter to sum up her motion before we take a vote. So that's how we're going to proceed. Councillor Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought this was going to go straight through on the nod. Everybody agrees. We could see everybody agreed. And then councillor Grodzewski thought it was strange that Liberal Democrats talked to other Liberal Democrats, presumably Conservative-stone. Councillor Forster attacked Liberal Democrats in Fleet for following government guidance. And councillor Carew came in on a point of order that was not a point of order. He didn't state any standing order that had been broken or anything. The only people who have been political on this have all been Conservative councillors. Please, the person that spoke sense was Russell Oppenheimer, who said this will go to his committee as soon as he can possibly do so. Let's just agree it and go ahead.
Thank you for your assistance. Councillor Wade.
Thank you, chairman. First of all, can I say that councillor Porter and I brought this motion to the council on behalf of the people of Hampshire, of which they have been contacting us about these considerable things. And I think it's somewhat innocuous that members of this chamber seem averse to using best practice and good ideas used in other councils. I think if there's anything we can get from another council that will benefit the people of Hampshire, we should do so. Right, chairman, I'm happy to set this motion because I want to use a real example in Hampshire. In my division, I have an infant school, a junior school, and a secondary school, and a narrow lane 629 metres long, where drop-off and pick-up times present a real safety hazard for schoolchildren and parents, even before Covid. We don't have parked cars block every bit of curb space along the lane and surrounding roads, where we have moving traffic, pedestrians, intermines, and narrow pavements where social distancing is virtually impossible. Where we do not have social bubbles, we have waves of parents and children massing at the two drop-off and pick-up times. I'm sure this situation in my division, or I know it is not unique in Hampshire, it affects probably most of your divisions, but the one in my division is particularly bad. All of these areas would benefit from a school-street concept, and I will give you a little bit of detail about as we go along. We're outside the schools with temporary restrictions on motorised traffic at school drop-off and pick-up times, applying to school traffic and through traffic. The result is safer, healthier, and a more pleasant environment for everyone. It's a sad reality that up and down the country, the roads around schools have become plagued with a surge of traffic concentrated over a 50-minute period at drop-off and pick-up times. School-run related traffic accounts for a quarter of the cars on the road, and has 254,000 vehicles a day in London alone, which is why they have school streets in some places. This results in increased risk of collisions with vulnerable road users and other motorists, unlawful parking, traffic jams, and road rage, and we've all had examples of that, I'm sure, from our residents. People on foot and cycling are left with the feeling that the roads and even the pavements in cases are no place for them. This has long implications for everyone, especially children. Statistics from the Department of Transport reveal that 40% of children killed in Great Britain's roads in 2018 were between the morning school run, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and on 23% after the school, between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. A report from insurer Admiral shows a 43% fall of road collisions during the school holidays at school time. Facts and statistics. For 30 years, children have been progressively removed from the roads which have been abandoned to motor vehicles. This created a vicious circle. Traffic makes the roads unsafe, so parents drive their children to school. It is a vicious...
One minute, councillor Wade.
In order to create a virtuous circle, local authorities in the UK have the powers under the Road Traffic Act to regulate traffic and restrict access, to avoid danger to persons and other traffic road users, to facilitate the passage on the road, a class of traffic, to prevent the use of the road by vehicles, which is inappropriate given the street concept. Depending on the type of traffic management order and agreement with the school councils, the council, the wider community, residents who live and work on school streets will also be able to register free of charge and exemption. Any blue badge holder could be exempt, exemptions also for temporary disabilities. Registration will be done online from the council's website, just like we're wanting to buy in a parking permit. This is a consultation period where residents around the school will be asked their views. This is when reaching out to impress a scheme going ahead really pays off. School-street schemes offer proactive solutions for school communities to tackle air pollution, poor health, and road danger reduction. A school-street scheme will encourage a healthier lifestyle and active travel to school for families, and lead to a better environment for everyone. In addition, to allow social distancing during a time of pandemic by removing the car element, thus making more space for safer distance walking. Therefore, chairman and members, please support this enthusiastically and based on the good ideas and good sentiment that was brought to this council. Thank you.
Councillor Manns.
Thank you, chairman. I'll be relatively brief. One of the reasons I was keen that we had this motion and we didn't amend it is because I think, in a national sense, it's important that the public see that we debate items such as this, that are important to the of them. Indeed, I think we need a wider debate about the way in which home-to-school transport operates. There is no doubt at all that a lot of schools right across the county have difficulties with the number of cars, and equally, the cost to the council of providing home-to-school transport for those entitled to it goes up every year, and this year it's well over £30 million. I actually rather welcome, if you like, the different views on this subject, because I think all our hearts are in the right place in terms of wanting to see something change in terms of the environment, and in terms of the safety, and in terms of the health of our children when they get to school, when they leave school. Equally, though, I also welcome a lot of my colleagues who pointed out some of the practical difficulties of simply going ahead. I think this does demonstrate, if I may say so, without trying to be at all partisan, the conservative approach of looking at a good idea and then ensuring that you've looked at all the issues involved in wanting to do something in terms of the willingness of the public to go along with it, and more specifically, the cost of doing so, and the practicalities of what's happening. So this is a good debate. I think councillor Grodzewski made very good points about the financial implications, the importance of consultation. Absolutely right. We've got to actually ensure that some of the comments that were made across both different parties are actually backed up with what people see and hear and want to see on the ground. Funding is clearly going to be an issue, and as I've said, we'll have to look at this very closely. I very much welcome councillor Oppenheimer's views on bringing it to the Select Committee. I think that should happen, and I think we will need to discuss carefully any financial implications, because clearly, if we're to go ahead with any of these schemes, we will need to put it in next year's budget, bearing in mind what I've said already. This is not going to be easy to do, bearing in mind the constraints we have generally. I won't go through everyone's comments, but I think the idea that you need more consultation, you need to decide where the funding is coming from, we need to discuss it both at Cabinet and at Select Committee, is a good idea. But ultimately, there is a real opportunity here to look more deeply at this subject, to see if we can actually find a way forward that is better than the present way of children getting to school. So I commend councillor Porter bringing this motion forward, regardless of where she got it from. And indeed, as I say, we won't be voting against it in the Conservative Party group, and I hope this motion can go through on the nod, chairman. Thank you.
Councillor Porter, would you like to sum up?
Yes, please. First of all, I was really heartened by councillor Manns's comments. I think this is something where Hampshire has the opportunity not just to be realistic, but to be ambitious too. And councillor Oppenheimer, I think we agree on most points regarding children and transport, and I hope that you will look at this positively within the Select Committee. Unfortunately, unlike councillor Carew's healthy new town, our new primary school in Winchester has a muddy footpath, no official cycleway, and only car access to it at the present, and we are hoping for great things going forward. And the reason that councillor Wade and I wanted to bring this is because we could see the possibilities for our own communities and for others. And I've been quite heartened by the fact that we haven't specifically advertised this, but we've had so many really positive emails from members of the public and school governors who have taken such an interest in this. Schools are having to manage social distancing, and in many cases, the cars near their schools are actually making that journey more difficult for people. And you've heard residents have written to you as local councillors. I know that because they've copied me in. And young people themselves have been asking for changes and want to see a new world emerge after Covid-19. I've spoken to officers at the county council. I've been reminded that actually, it would be cheaper to buy each child a bike than a one annual bus pass, bearing in mind they go to secondary school for five years, then that has potentially huge savings long term. Yes, this is based on a Lib Dem motion shared across the country, but I think that we all share, as county councillors, the opportunity to make our children healthier and to start thinking about our children as being active individuals that can choose to walk or cycle to school as well as to actually catch a bus, or be even worse, transported to school in somebody else's car. And healthier children will bring forward eventually healthier adults, and only school streets could really start the process to achieve this. Thank you.
Thank you. So bearing in mind, we will amend the recommendation to correct the stick-and-paste error from councillor Porter, but I'm going to ask people if they wish to abstain, and then because there's such unanimity, whether there's anyone against. And if there is no one against, we can then accept this and move on, bearing in mind that councillor Oppenheimer has shown a way forward for the council. So, any abstentions? Yes, I abstain as chairman. Are there any against? Any against this motion? Pause. See if there are any against. If there are none against, therefore, the motion is carried as on the paper, with the minor of input.
Chairman, you're muted.
How did that happen? Okay, so now I'm back with you again. I'm sorry about that. Just to confirm, the motion is carried. There were no votes against. One abstention. Now, we move on to item 10, which is the questions in relation to the Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority. There have been no questions submitted, so 10a is not required. 10b is to receive a report from the Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority, and I ask for councillor Carter to propose that report. Councillor Carter.
Thank you, chairman. I'm pleased to confirm that a meeting, I will take 10b and 10c together. I'm pleased to confirm that a meeting of Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority was held virtually on the 22nd of July, and separately, a meeting of Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Shadow Authority was also held. Reports of those two meetings, 10b and 10c, are on your agenda, members. I have nothing further to add to those reports, but will take questions if there are any. Thank you, chairman.
Any questions from members? No questions? I'll then go on to the next item on the agenda. Item 11, which is from the Health and Wellbeing Board, some constitutional arrangements. Councillor Fairhurst, chairman of that board, would you please present the report?
Thank you, chairman, and good morning, members. This is just to inform you of some new appointments to the Health and Wellbeing Board, as per the paper. Thank you.
Are there any questions? No questions. Thank you, councillor Fairhurst. We go on then to item 12a, Adults Social Care and Health, Part II report. Again, councillor Fairhurst.
Again, thank you, chairman. This is just a report on the Hampshire Disabilities Day Opportunities Model, and again, happy to take questions now or later if members wish to speak to me about it later on. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this particular report from any member? Thank you, then. That report is acceptable, and that concludes this meeting. Thank you all very much. You may now press the leave button.
Well done, chairman. Thank you.